Welcome, everybody, to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for DeKalb, Illinois, this Monday, April 4th. I'll ask to start with a roll call.
Becker, O'Flaherty here, Pena Graham here, Stoker, Wright, McMahon.
Here.
Chair Maxwell.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. I will ask for an approval of the agenda, if anyone would like to motion that.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Moved by McMahon.
I'll second.
Seconded by O'Flaherty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We'll look to the minutes of the March 7th meeting. If there are any additions or deletions, if not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I move to approve as submitted.
Moved by O'Flaherty.
Second.
Seconded by Pena Graham. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. This is the public participation of the meeting. If anyone would like to say something or speak to something that is not on the current agenda, you can come forward now and please state your name and your address. Please note for the record real quickly that Stoker has arrived, so we have five.
Hello, my name is Cliff Cleland. I've been in this town since 1962, when I came here to go to school, the university, and I'm still here, raising a family here. And I've seen a lot of changes in the town. And I really love the place. I love the downtown. I want it to be thriving and everything. And my concern is that things will not go in the way I want them to go. I want them to be better, whatever that is. I had some questions based on the story that appeared in the Chronicle a couple of days ago.
Mr. Cleland, if this pertains to the project that's on the agenda, there will be a portion later when we can speak to that. But this is only for, this segment is only for things that are not on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, so you'll have an opportunity.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's my job, I was moved.
It's okay. I have to remember them myself. We'll move on to, oh.
No.
Yeah.
Just items, we'll have the applicant get up and present, then we can have the public speak after the applicant and staff.
Yeah. We have one item of new business, a sketch plan, concept plan, a request by John Saucer for review of a sketch plan, concept plan, for construction of approximately 32 apartment units in the existing building at 145 Fisk Avenue. And I understand Mr. Saucer has a presentation?
I know staff has kind of some photos and renderings that are going to kind of be flipping through, but while I speak. So, for those of you that I haven't met, my name's John Saucer. Grew up in DeKalb, went to school all the way through here and had my business here my whole life. So, I've been a DeKalb resident and vested member of the community for many, many years. So, I've known of this building way back when I was in high school. I actually met Joe Lucassio when he was part of the school board or administration, when this was the administration building. And sadly, this building has been vacant for some 25 years. And for those that you hear tonight are probably very familiar because you have comments or thoughts one way or the other, and probably want, like myself, want to see something good happen with the property. Probably, we all feel that it's a shame that it's sat vacant for as many years it has had, or that it has. And the current ownership, I know this has kind of gone through some different ideas and planning over the years, but, you know, the current owner, while hasn't developed it as long as he's owned it, I think has made good strides with the building. For those of you who aren't familiar, you know, maybe a dozen years ago, did at least have a new roof put on it, and it had asbestos remediated out of it. And, you know, and mitigated some of the dangers of a vacant building sitting there. They've, you know, boarded up the windows and tried to make it somewhat presentable for the amount of years. Now, I think we all agree it could probably have looked a little bit better, or certainly can look better. But, you know, the goal of, obviously, when you have a building sitting vacant like this for so many years, you know, what do we do with it? I guess we either redevelop it and save what we can, or we tear it down. I would venture to guess that everyone looking at this building can see that it has really good bones, and it's a pretty building, and it's history. So, tearing it down probably isn't the best option. Hopefully, you agree with me that due to its history and the structure, that we can bring it back to life and make something that looks nice and also can fit in with the existing community that is there now. So, obviously, different ideas have been floated, and so there's only so many certain things that, you know, a building like that can lend itself to and what it's set up for. The way I interpreted it, it seemed best suited within the local community to be apartments. Certainly, there are between one- and four-bedroom apartments throughout the city, but I would say, venture to say that throughout this part of the community, there's more one- and two-bedroom apartments, probably a little more quieter residential area than other multifamily projects. So, what we're looking to do is do mostly one- and two-bedrooms. So, it'll be a lower density of, you know, per person versus if you had four-bedroom apartments there and a high density of people per unit. So, as far as parking, there's already an existing, you know, parking lot there. It does have egress, a curb cut on Fisk. It's not really being used right now, but there's a curb cut there. And then it has egress, ingressing egress on Sycamore Road. My goal was to use the existing entrance, but staff and the engineers have determined that it really is too close to the intersection, so they're suggesting moving it to the north, northeast on Sycamore Road to better accommodate traffic flow away from the stoplight. But there, if you look at the site plan, there's plenty, actually more than required of parking existing already, or that will fit on the site there. That's basically already the paved area that is there. You might not realize it because there's, you know, some growth that has happened on the existing parking lot, but really, all that open area that's there now is an existing parking lot. So, trying to revive it and bring it back to life, it does have really great bones. I think it, looking at, and, you know, certainly growing up here, knowing that local community within DeKalb of what's there, you know, obviously, it's kind of in the buffer zone between a lot of multifamily and then the start of some single family. But certainly, the way the building has been, it's been there long before a lot of those single-family homes have been built. So, it's kind of one of those coming-to-the-nuance types of things. I know it's probably been sleepy and quiet because nothing's been going on there for 25 years, but our goal is to keep it quiet and in line with the neighborhood. And so, you know, residential, you know, one- and two-bedrooms are about the quietest type of living, I think, that you can get that would very well suit this particular building. The existing landscaping, obviously, there's a lot of mature trees around there on the front, as well as abutting the neighbors. The goal is to certainly keep as many of those mature trees as possible in landscaping and any trees or bushes that do need to, that might be in the way. I don't really think there's any large ones that are in the way, which is good. But anything that needs to be cut down, obviously, we will, you know, replace and add more and try and make it look beautiful. And so, it won't look like a brand-new building with, you know, 16-inch shrubs, all surrounded by mature landscaping in the neighborhood. So, well, the vast majority of the mature trees are going to stay. So, that's our goal, is to make it look as nice and still blend in with the existing neighborhood. Certainly, being, Fisk is a quiet street that I think probably, half the town probably drives by First Street and doesn't even know about, especially being a one-way. But Sycamore Road, obviously, is the start there, and so, you know, that's one of our major arteries. So, being multifamily, I think it fits in, that it's certainly, it's walking distance to our downtown, to the university, it's right on, you know, bus routes, as well as, you know, major arteries that, you know, I don't think traffic flow is going to be a problem going in and out of Sycamore Road, that you're not going to have a huge influx of traffic going down Fisk, or you're bothering some of the other small side streets, like DeKalb Avenue or Second or whatnot, that would be close to there. So, that is the general concept. You know, we're, the way the floor plan looks out, we're trying to keep it with exactly, within the existing footprint of the building. So, you already have a kind of predefined space to work with, and then you start laying out your floor plans with, you know, according to your code and what you can fit. So, if anyone thinks 32 units sounds like a lot, we could do half that many and make them four bedrooms and have four unrelated people living there, but I don't think that's really the better option to go. I think smaller, quieter units, you know, one- and two-bedroom units tend to have longer residency, so you're going to have a multi-year tenants versus all the units turning over every single year, which, again, kind of creates to more a stable neighborhood and less interruption with your local neighbors. So, that's kind of everything I've prepared, but I'm certainly, I can sit down or I can take questions, whatever you would like.
Thank you, Paul. I appreciate that. Does the staff have a report?
Yeah, I did a brief memo in your packets. John went through quite a bit explaining the project. But the site is currently zoned, neighborhood commercial, course of building on there, four stories, 24,000 square feet, proposing 32 apartment units, nine two-bedroom and 23 one-bedroom. Square footage, applicant indicates about 650 square feet for the two-bedroom, or one-bedroom and two-bedroom, about 900 square feet. Leases will be at market rate, and there's a summary in your background. History, John, you kind of alluded to a little bit of history on the site. Of course, St. Mary's Hospital closing in '65, then it was a dormitory for a short time, then the DeKalb School District Administration Building for 20-plus years, and then, more recently, in 2006, property was sold to the current owner. The intent, I think, was rezoned at that time to do luxury lofts, that obviously didn't materialize. And then in 2019, there was a 40-room boutique hotel proposed. That project did not go forward, and they did a concept plan that was in front of the commission. So, a concept plan or sketch plan, as UDO refers to, is a chance for the applicant to get feedback from the commission, the staff, residents. There's no motion required, it's not a yes or no approval. Just some feedback so they can proceed to the next step, which would be a rezoning application and the preliminary engineering plans and a public hearing, which would entice, again, notification to owners within 250 feet to appear at a hearing if they wish to comment. So, it's not a hearing, but we're going to have public comment. We've sent letters out to surrounding owners within 250 feet, enticing their feedback, and we did get a few, which I'll go over in a little bit. As noted, the, a little bit on the site plan, obviously using a lot to the current building and the, John mentioned the access on route, or Sycamore Road, too close to the intersection, so the plan does show that being moved further to the northeast and made a right-in, right-out. It will not be a full access, right-in, right-out only. It's too close to the intersection for safety purposes to have a full access. The parking shown here, they do have 65 parking spaces shown. The unified development ordinance, based on the bedroom count, would require 57 spaces, so they do have adequate parking, a few extra, actually. The access on the west side of the building is going to be reestablished for an access there. Of course, Fisk is one-way going eastbound. They will have a, John mentioned some, the background on the one- and two-bedroom, the reasoning for doing that. They'll also have some amenities. They indicate in the summary dedicated mail parcel room for receiving packages, also a tenant lounge, exercise room, outdoor patio and natural gas grill. In looking at this, as they go forward, they're going to request a planned development residential zoning, PDR. They'll need some waivers to the ordinance, and I just highlighted a few that we did note here in the memo. There's a footy-foot, 30-foot buffer area adjacent to lower-density residential, so if it's a multifamily zoning, next to a low-density single-family, there's a 30-foot buffer. So, obviously, they cannot, you know, they're restricted on these site parameters, the width, so they'll request a waiver on that. They do have the parking lot on the east side at about 10 feet from the property line. The detention area will be here. There needs to be more engineering to take a look at that. There's a 10-foot parking setback on Sycamore Road. They have about 5 to 10 feet on there. Again, they need the width for the drive aisles to, they're kind of constrained in where they can, you know, put the parking. The parking's still got to meet the design requirements for width. Aisle's got to be 24-foot wide, so they're trying to fit that in. There's some perimeter setbacks for parking that they'll slightly be within, and of course, in landscaping, with the reduced parking setbacks, they'll probably have less landscaping, but do plan to landscape around the perimeter of the site and that buffer area to the east with a single-family, probably propose a fence would be a good idea along that stretch, too, for privacy and also for more, you know, people avoiding to cut through lots. So, staff has taken a preliminary look at this with outside agencies, no major issues regarding that. They need to evaluate the stormwater management on the site as they go the next step. Vehicle access points, as noted, will need to be looked at closer, and they need to do analysis on the access roads to determine the impacts on Sycamore Road and Fisk Avenue, but, again, the access on Sycamore Road will be moved further east and made a right-in, right-out. So, they got to get further away from that intersection. And I did show in your packets some, that's the, looking from Fisk, and you can see the area where they're going to push that drive to the back parking lot. These are some, I think, from the Realtors, aerial 3D or drone photos, showing that site. You can see the current access is too close to the intersection, so they're going to move that down here, make it right-in, right-out, which will be safer. This is the back of the building, the building looking out towards Sycamore Road. This is a photo from the inside. And that's a current access on Sycamore Road, showing the proximity to Sycamore Road is pretty close. Again, looking down Sycamore Road from First Street, the access is right here. So, there's some images that were in your packet, just showing the site. So, again, no motions required. We did get some comments from the public. In your packet, there was an email from John and Margaret Delino indicating support of the project. They own the apartment buildings that, right adjacent to the site, just to the west and south of that, across Fisk, they own those two apartments, they indicated support for the project. And since the packets were posted on Thursday, the agenda, we did get a couple emails over the weekend, and I'm not sure if they're here tonight, but first one was from Mr. Gary Heller of 521 DeKalb Avenue, which is right here. He indicated it's a backyard of joints of property, concerned about the quietness of the neighborhood with a large parking lot. He noted and provided a photo that there's nice, large trees right behind his lot that are on the subject site, and just had a question if they could be saved. The plan does show his lot is right up in here, so he backs up to the detention area. And I did respond, and the copies provided the commission that, trying to do everything to save the trees, it would depend on the grading needed for the detention area, but as Mr. Saucer indicated, there's intent to save the trees on the side, if possible. There's no reason to take them down, so. Then, we also received email from, a few more questions and comments from Mr. Nathan Books of, Nathan lives right next door, right here at 201 Fisk. And I don't know if he's here tonight. He said he may be able to come, but it doesn't look like it. But anyway, he had other summarized comments. He noted the density of 32. He asked, you know, how's it compared to surrounding apartments? The surrounding apartments do have fewer units, but they're on smaller lots, so the actual density, the dwelling units per acre for this site is actually lower than some of the adjoining apartments, because they have fewer apartments, but they're on a smaller lot. So, this project's about 24.5 dwelling units per acre. Some of the other apartment units is south of, on Fisk or to the west, 28 and a half dwelling units an acre, 29, 23 dwelling units an acre. So, they're very comparable to the density of surrounding apartment buildings. Also brought up the issue of a fence planned, or requested a fence be provided along the east side of the site. As you can see, he's right adjoining the property, and was concerned about cut-through traffic, people walking through, and just overall more of a security along there and privacy. So, we'll recommend a fence be put up there along with the landscaping to buffer those areas further. Rooftop patio was some of the renderings Mr. Saucer provided, showed a possible patio on the upper levels here. I guess that makes sure it look better. Here's a house that Mr. Books lives in, concerned about just the noise of the outdoor patio with people up there. As Saucer could respond, but he indicated that that's not a priority with the patios, he's still looking at those, but that patio on the east end is not a priority. I don't know if you want to go into that further.
Correct. Yeah, I think the artist got a little excessive with the patio renderings there. Her goal is to have at least one, but the end to the east is likely not where that one would go.
Yeah. And the final was this, I think, a, back to the site plan here, had a comment about, looked like there was an ADA ramp going to the side of the building on the east side, which is not correct. That was a setback there. So, the ADA accessible would be at the rear of the building, and so it was just more of a misprint on the plan. So, I did respond back to his email regarding these, so, but those were included that came after the agenda packets, so.
Okay.
Applicants just looking for comments, feedback from the commission and the public.
Thank you. Comments, questions from the commission? We're, yeah, I'm going to work through the commission first, and then we'll drop people up. Sure. I mean, personally, I like the idea simply because, again, I think that the architecture in DeKalb is tremendously important and preserving it as much as we can. You know, it's very easy to tear things down and build something that's, you know, slightly generic, but, you know, you're right, that the building has good bones and it's a nice, it's interesting how it's set into a neighborhood, but it's also a nice touch at the end of that street, too. So, from an architectural standpoint, I think it's a great idea. I'm glad that somebody is finally, you know, ready to press the button and try to move forward with it. I know a couple of, a couple of plans came through and didn't work out, but, yeah, I would be interested to see, you know, again, addressing all the people, all the comments of the people in the area as well. I would point out, too, that for the residents there, I appreciate your concern, I certainly do, but I, you know, it was always, I guess, assumed that something was going to go there, so. Anybody else have any comments?
I like what I'm seeing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be an excellent use of that old building. I've lived within a couple of blocks of it pretty much since I moved to DeKalb in '94, and I had friends who, when Steve Irving built those houses on Fisk, they were, they were there right away, and when the school left, there was a lot of, well, what's going to happen to this building? This would be a really, really nice use. I like seeing old stuff kept and improved and preserved in the right ways, so, no, this is a good direction.
Thank you. Agreed.
I have a question. So, John, in terms of, just to answer Nathan's questions, I think we answered most of them, but Nathan Books, he said, is there going to be a fence? Dan, did I hear correct that there would be a fence required on the east lot line?
So, I think it's not determined just yet, but I'm certainly amenable to working with him and staff on the preference if it's a fence or if it's landscaping, so.
Yeah, the ordinance dictates a buffer, so that could be landscaping, a fence, combination thereof.
Okay. So, it'll be something to address, number two in Nathan's email. And then, did I hear you correct that the patio is not determined in terms of which rooftop you would use?
Well, I think there's a lot of flat roofs there, and I think the artist's rendering kind of put railings on all of them for an architectural purpose, but then also showed people on numerous ones, but it's not our intent to have multiple patios. Really, we're just kind of looking to probably just have one, maybe two, if it lends itself, but most likely just one.
Yeah, I mean, it makes more sense you'd put it on the side where the drive is, as opposed to on the, I guess it would be the east side of the building. And then, you know, my concern is the 32 units. I mean, I remember back 20 years ago, we were in that area, we were tearing down the Fisk and the Pond area places because the density was too much. So, how does this relate to the density back 20 years ago when we tore down the houses on Fisk and the apartments there?
Well, I can't recall what the density was there. Bill is pretty familiar with that, but the density compared, as I noted, with the surrounding apartments to the west and south, in terms of dwelling units per acre, is comparable.
It's comparable, okay.
I could comment professionally and personally on that. In 1971, I moved into the H Flats. It's the last flats that are still standing on the south side of Fisk, just a little bit east of this area. And while I was there, I lived, it was a five-flat, four-flat turned into a five, creative design by the owner. And we filled that place with graduate students, and there were three or four people to a two-bedroom apartment. So, the, professionally, I can say, because I was involved as the head of the Building and Development Department when the Fisk Avenue idea was first piloted and through the TIF program, it was the first major TIF project in the city of DeKalb, and then a city manager in the early '90s, a lot of heavier density around the corner on DeKalb So, it wouldn't begin to approach what we used to have.
Okay.
And it was uncontrolled, too, so it was an area that existed long before zoning. Our modern zoning was in place in the city of DeKalb. I mean, the flats were built in the 1890s, 18, late 1880s, or 1890s, excuse me. So, I think this is in a direction of, and I don't want to enter this conversation because it eventually comes to me in the council, but I'd just say, in the direction of a more thoughtful density.
Okay. All right. And then, last question is, can you tell, John, I mean, these trees that were submitted by the other neighbor, do you know if they will be preserved or?
Well, you said that was pending the pond, right, the drainage?
At this point, I just don't know where the tree is up against that particular neighbor. I don't know.
Okay.
Does the, I'm assuming there are parameters for detention pond in relation to the amount of square footage of the parking lot?
To develop a preliminary engineering plan and the size of detention to take care of the stormwater in the site, and that will dictate the slope of the detention pond, how deep it will be, how close to the edge of the property and the tree, but, you know, if it's right on the line, it's more than likely could be saved. So, the plan's got to be developed more determined. At this level, we just can't.
Okay.
So, I have a quick question about the parking lot plan. So, are you planning, then, on only coming in from, would be northbound, so like northbound in, northbound out? So, it's going to be like right turn in, right turn only out? Is there going to be a left to southbound entrance, or?
No, on Sycamore Road, engineering has determined that you'll only be able to turn in if you're heading north on Sycamore Road, and you'll only be able to leave heading north just due to the proximity to the intersection, that stoplight, just not enough room to safely turn left. Although there was a curb cut there much closer, certainly understand, you know, that was probably put in twenty-five years ago, and at some point, they just can't shut off access to a property, but, and that's where it was. But these are the times when we redevelop something that, one of the positives that comes out of this while it's costly is better traffic flow for the community.
Any other questions by council or commission? Okay. With that, then I will open it up to public questions. Again, if you'll, as you come forward, if you'll state your name and your address and...
Hello, my name is Cliff Cleland. I live at five eighteen South Second Street in DeKalb. And as I said, I've been in this town since nineteen sixty-two. Seen a lot of changes. Love the downtown. It's had its ups and its downs. I hope to see it go up again. I applaud Mr. Saucer for his work and his attempt to turn this old beautiful building into something that's, you know, livable, that people are there, that there's a buzz about it. That's good. I like that. I had some questions, looking at the story in the Chronicle. The one-bedroom units are six hundred and fifty square feet and the two-bedrooms are nine hundred square feet. How do those numbers compare with some of the other apartment buildings in the downtown area? We have several new ones here. How do those units compare? Are we looking at smaller or larger or about the same?
Dan, I think, Dan, I think you addressed as far as the density is concerned, that it's similar to the surrounding properties, correct?
Similar surrounding properties? I don't know if you're referring to some of the other ones, newer ones?
The newer, I'm thinking of the newer ones that have been built in the last couple of years. High-end apartments that are... And the other question I have is occupancy rate. Have you done a study of the occupancy rate of those apartment complexes? Are they close to filled up or are we looking at?
Well, the most recent ones, particularly done by John Pappas, are fully occupied.
What was, I didn't hear?
They're fully occupied.
Okay. That's a good sign. Okay.
I did have a few, anticipating somewhat of a question, similar question on the square footage. I didn't get all of them down, but Isaac Suites, of course, on Sycamore Road, fully furnished. Those are fully furnished. And they're smaller, four hundred and twenty square feet to four hundred and eighty-three square feet. Two-bedroom, I think, seven twenty square feet. Chuck Shepard, who got approval for some apartments at Hillcrest and Route twenty-three in the former office buildings that went through the commission, it looks like he's around eight hundred to nine hundred square feet.
Pretty similar.
Similar. Rista Residence, which was just approved by the city on Barbara Green, again, fully furnished, one-bedroom, seven hundred square feet. So just to give a rough idea.
Did you mention occupancy rate? Are we?
Well, Rista's not constructed yet, but the Isaac Suites is fully occupied.
It's empty now. Yeah. But most of these are fully occupied? Okay. Well, who are we looking at for people moving into the apartment complex? Who is the audience that you're trying to attract?
I think applicant could respond to that.
John?
Anyone? I don't think there's been a vast majority of...
If you could go to the mic, John, just pick that up on the video.
Sorry, really, this is open to anyone. I think there's certainly, even if you look at how much our town is growing, there haven't been massive, massive apartments or housing built in quite some years. And I think if you've lived here long enough, you've seen, or maybe, you know, if you don't know, if you're in this industry, we did have an occupancy dip there for a while, but as time has gone on and no new, major new construction, really, we've seen that fill up. And, you know, as a testament to the new stuff that's been built in the last couple of years being hundred percent full, I think it shows that slow controlled growth, that there is a need for it. But there's no one specific target, but...
Okay. All right. Let's see. Let's see. The heating and cooling comes up to my mind when I see these ten to twelve-foot ceilings. It would seem that, I live in a place that has eight-foot ceilings, so a twelve-foot ceiling is, you know, another third. Heating and cooling, is that taken into consideration with these high ceilings? Can you put drop ceilings in or am I...
I think, you know, as it pertains to, I guess, more developed questions, Mr. Cleland, we are just looking at this as a preliminary sketches.
Sure.
And so, you know, as the project progresses, we'll definitely see more of the prints, as it were.
Okay. I was asking, oh, this is the one, this is the thing that jumped out at me as I read this article. Mr. Saucer, in two thousand seventeen, he sold some rental properties, now known as Hunter Star Properties, on DeKalb's north side to Evanston-based Hunter Properties. Well, we all know what happened there. That was a disaster, and you wouldn't do anything like that again, would you? I mean, I'm going to put you in a spot here.
I think you're confusing some of the properties that I sold with some of the other ones that had issues.
Okay.
All of the properties that I sold to Hunter became Hunter Star. The vast majority of the issues that that company had, Hunter, were other apartment buildings that they acquired that had been run in the ground for decades. Every, all the units that I had sold are still operating in very good quality apartments.
That answers my question. I think I have no more questions. Let's see. You mentioned the neighbors, the giving their approval, the next-door neighbors. Are any neighbors saying, we don't want this property? We don't want to build here? Have you heard anything like, anything negative? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cleland.
For the people that don't know me, my name is Robert Carlson. I live at three Wedgwood Cove in DeKalb. And my history is that I owned Carlson Appraisal for forty-two years. And within that time period, I did valuations on a significant number of multifamily apartments in the city of DeKalb, of which many of these assignments were properties owned by the Saucer family. These properties were new construction, existing properties as an investment, and remodeled multifamily properties. And during that period of time of forty-two years, I also did properties in Macomb and Carbondale for banks that were working with the Saucers. And it was interesting, when I was in Macomb, the city of Macomb sold vacant parcels to the Saucers for development because they really thought very highly of them. And in Carbondale, I spoke to the assistant city manager, and his comment was, we like these guys. Currently, I own three hundred and two apartment units and an office building at nine oh one North First Street, in which we have our office for Riverside Properties. And if you could do the aerial, Dan. On Second Street, directly across the street from, from the subject parcel is four twenty-seven, four seventeen, those properties I own. And then on First Street, right next to Delano's, there's a four eighteen, and I own that property, and that is part of that parcel. Now, that has thirty units in it of the three buildings. And I would say with thirty, thirty-two units, that is very compatible with the mix that I have. I also own just directly north of the Elwood House, on the other side of that wooded area, the Windsor Apartments, and I think everybody is driven by the Windsor Apartments. That's, that building is kind of sits at an angle and has a very aesthetic location right across from the school. So we own that also. You know, I was saying I, I should correct myself when I say that. It's my wife, my son, and I, so. And then we own Hillcrest Place Apartments, which is just north of where the subject is. And we own the Elwood View Apartments. And one thing about, one of the questions was the mix, if it should be two-in-one bedrooms, and I find that, both in my previous profession and my business now, is that that's a perfect mix. The Elwood View, which is at the corner of Augusta and First Street, is the kind of Tudor-looking complex, and that has a mix of one bedrooms and two bedrooms. So, you know, I, okay, so... So my opinion with regard to John Saucer. And like I say, over forty-two years, I've worked with John for quite often, and I've known him very well. His son, or my son and he are the same age. So anyway, I want to say that John Saucer has the experience in all factors of property ownership, both locally and statewide. And I find that to be very important with regards to this project. Another factor, John Saucer is a prudent, and I capitalize it, he is a prudent property owner. And in the appraisal process, you know, you have potentially two kinds of ownership. You have a prudent ownership and you have a less-than-prudent ownership. And if you want to see the problem properties, you can usually identify them as being less-than-prudent. So it's been my experience that he has designed new properties or remodeled existing properties that meet the highest and best use of the site. Meeting the highest and best use. In the real estate field, that is your, your number-one measurement if you meet the highest and best use of that site. I spent forty-two years looking at what the highest and best use is, so. In conclusion, the Fisk Avenue property requires all of John Saucer's knowledge and experience to improve the property and the neighborhood. And I can honestly say, having the properties that I have, that it's an improvement of the neighborhood is very, very important. And then, based on my lengthy experience with, with John in the appraisal field and also the investment field, I give my total approval to this project. And one final comment, and this is kind of humorous, but on the sketch, it has traffic in both directions on Fisk Avenue. And it, will the city be using its police power to make Fisk Avenue having traffic in both directions? And if that is the case, I have, I have approval of this potential to change.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sure he appreciates the endorsement. Would anyone else like to come forward? Please.
Hello, I'm Marilyn Cleland at five eighteen South Second Street in DeKalb. I, I'm glad to hear what I've heard tonight. I have been concerned. The connection, however indirect, with the Hunter Properties really bothered me because I was called upon as a resident of DeKalb to be in some of the Hunter Properties, and they were not managed, they were, they were not kept up, it was imprudent management, to say the very least. A cynical, as a matter of fact, management with the residents there. And, and I, I don't want that to happen to our city, to anybody in our city. And all are welcome, as you say, in the apartment. That is good. So I'm glad, and you are a resident, a lifelong resident of DeKalb, and I'm presuming that you probably are going to stay here. It's this business of buying apartments and the manager, the person who's really the owner, is gone far away. And I, I hope that you will stay here, Mr. Saucer, and be with your apartments. It is a lovely building. I like it very much, and I wish it well, and you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Gary Erickson, I live at five oh eight DeKalb Avenue and have lived there for close to twenty years. The character of the neighborhood is quiet, and I think that's largely due to Fisk Avenue being a one-way street, and would urge that that never be changed, partly for the peace of mind of the neighborhood, but also there are a growing number of children in the community. And I think that a two-way Fisk Avenue could create some kind of danger. So I would urge that for the sake of the neighborhood, we always keep Fisk Avenue one-way, heading east from First to Fourth Street. Another concern is that we do have a school zone on Sycamore Road, and so I'm glad to hear about the right-in, right-out driving into the parking lot, and would urge that there be some kind of effort made to make sure that that school zone is, remains safe for the children who do cross Sycamore Road and often travel happily through the neighborhood, making their teenage sounds, which are mostly delightful. So I would stand in favor of the project as someone who can see the project from my front porch, my front window, and just simply urge that we do all we can to preserve the character of the neighborhood by keeping Fisk Avenue one-way and preserving that school zone as kind of a sacred space so that children are safe coming back and forth.
Thank you for your comments, Gary. Anyone else?
My name is Judith Rodeo. I reside at two 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 Sycamore Road with my husband Eric. And our concern is, as all are welcome, is low income. Some of the low income can bring, they bring problems to an area. And not that we want to be discriminatory against anyone, but those are concerns that we have, you know. We're also concerned, will our property taxes go up? Where the garbage is going to go? Where, you know, there are some unanswered questions. We are in support of doing something for the building, which is much better than what it's doing currently now, but those are concerns. Like you said, all are welcome, but low-income housing can cause a problem. Section eight vouchers. There are some lovely people that unfortunately need to use that, but there are some people that abuse it. And pot smoking, that's another problem. Yes, it's legal. Is it legal federally? Yes. But that's, it comes with an odor, and that's a big problem for me. We are in a school area, and we do not encourage the use of any sort of drug use, legal or not. But that is a huge concern. Would, you know, would that be allowed in the building? Smoking's not allowed in most buildings. Pot is, pots to be smoked. I mean, as a concern that I have. I mean, how do you, how do you personally feel about something like that?
Mr. Saucer, do you want to, I think we can tackle two things. Just by virtue of what you're expecting to probably put on the price tag as far as rent is concerned, I think you're going to get nice-upstanding citizens. And as far as the smoking aspect, again, I assume this is going to be a non-smoking facility.
This project is, these are going to be market-rate apartments. As far as smoking or non-smoking, I'm with you. I'm not a fan of marijuana, but our state has decided that it's legal, so it's created some challenges. As a property manager, it's created challenges. I'm with you that while some people can do it legally, not everybody likes the odor. My experience is... My experience is, even if you, you know, you rent a car, it says no smoking. You, um, rent a hotel room, they say no smoking or no pets. My experience as a property manager is, they're going to do what they're going to do anyway. So to try and tell them no smoking has been fruitless. To try and some, tell somebody no, no pot smoking is, is essentially fruitless. So, um, I could, you know, tell you that's what's, what can happen, but I don't think it's going to be true. So I think the goal of having nice, new, market-rate apartments, active management, um, in my experience, active management is what really keeps the problems at bay. Uh, you don't rent to problem tenants or that have evictions or so forth. Um, and so that's really the key of keeping good property, um, is active management. So that's our goal, and that's how I like to operate, uh, buildings. So I don't, I hope that alleviates some of your concerns. I share them and I agree with you, but, uh, I'm an active property manager.
Anyone else? If not, oh.
Hello, I'm Jacob Merrill. I live on 900 Crane Drive, and I want to start out saying that as like a student at NIU, I absolutely love the idea of this plan. And as someone who's studying economics and especially land use economics, I want to say this plan is definitely the right move in terms of growing DeKalb and creating a sustainable economically and environmentally, um, community. But I will bring one critique, which is about the parking lot, because as you mentioned, I think you said it's fifty-seven parking spots are required for this apartment building legally, um, but it's only about thirty units, and that feels like overkill, because that is, even though there is some parking lot there, there's still like a nice field. And I feel like having to put all of that extra park, excuse me, that extra parking is a waste of that space and causing, you know, issues with having to create that retention pond and everything. And so I think if the city would have some way that they'd be able to give a waiver to reduce that number, and that that parking lot can be designed to be smaller, that that would make the environment better and also solve, like, the noise issues, because the biggest source of noise is going to be from car traffic in the area. And so reducing that by reducing parking, I think would definitely go a lot towards making the community more, like, holistic and sustainable.
Thank you. Dan, I think, well, and to, to your point too, though, um, I, I think it was thirty-two, um, units, and then I, I think you're working under the assumption that that would be one person per unit, and some of those are two bedrooms. So there is a necessity, and, and obviously through city code that we've developed, um, for a, a reasonable density of parking versus residences. So, um, I, I, like you, would love to see more green space and less asphalt, but, um, I, I think there probably is a rational necessity for that.
Yeah, we'll look at that with the applicant. Uh, we ran into this issue of maybe too much parking with Arista residents, where the applicant actually proposed less parking than what was required, and then increased it a little bit. So fifty-seven's required, but it's one-half space for every one-bedroom and two-and-a-half spaces for every two-bedroom, um, counting for guests and et cetera. But we're looking at maybe reducing that, but the applicant did put sixty-two spaces on the plan, so they've got to be comfortable with there. But we'll, we're open to taking a look if it's, you know, if the applicant, and our research indicates that it's, uh, maybe too much. Yeah, it would help, particularly on this site, to reduce some parking, if possible, and add some more green space, because it is tight and there's not much for setbacks, so.
One thing I wanted to add, uh, due to a, a property being vacant for so long and not, uh, being maintained like we all take care of our homes, the misconception is that it looks like it's a big green field, that's actually all parking lot. It's just had weeds and leaves and debris grow in it and get captured there and be a dirty catch base for years, but there's actually the vast majority that is already parking lot with curb and gutter, and so that water's already going into this, into the storm system. So by kind of upgrading that and using really essentially what is there, um, you know, is actually going to be better for the stormwater system because we can slow that detention a little bit better. Um, but I just wanted to clarify that misconception, because it does look like grass in the area, but if you walked it and actually looked out there, it's an asphalt parking lot under the weeds.
Thank you. Anyone, yes, please.
Again, Marilyn Cleland. I, I, I can't help but, uh, respond to this question about the parking lot, and I would only say that I hope that you'll be as environmentally sensitive as you can be. My observation, frankly from China, was, uh, parking lots that had grass growing, the whole, they were, they were small squares.
Bricks, a brick with holes among, you walk by one lane, you just see bricks, turn around, it's a grass field.
And the water is absorbed into the lawn, line, uh, into the ground and not run, runoff. It's, I, we, I don't know why, we've, I have never once seen these in the United States, and I've been all over the United States, but it seemed to me brilliant and attractive, and there was that rain going right into the ground where it should. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cleland. Anyone else? If not, we'll just close it for discussion at this point, and I believe we are, have considerations on the comprehensive plan with some discussion. Thank you, Mr. Saucer.
And if, uh, is this on? Good evening.
Hello.
And if you're not here for the comprehensive plan, uh, discussion, and you want to go, you can do so now, without hurting anybody's feelings. Dan's going too, I guess. Well, uh, thank you for, uh, taking this on. Uh, as you well know, we haven't, uh, upgraded our plan formally since two thousand and five. Usually these plans are five to seven years in duration, and we've gone through a couple different growth spurts, uh, since two thousand and five, and although, uh, I have to say the plan has held up in, in certain areas in certain respects, and in other areas it hasn't, uh, because we can't foresee the future, uh, as accurately as we would like. We have before you tonight a document, and you're probably wondering, well, how did we get to a document already? Wait a minute, we haven't talked about this. Well, uh, if you, if you look at it, and I'm, I'm going to just walk us very briefly through the first couple of chapters, it's, it's by design, uh, titled Inventory and Analysis. So what are the data that we know about where we are now and how we got to where we are? And, uh, the section three, Goals and Objectives, is not meant to be presumptuous, and I alluded to this at the last meeting. It's, it's meant to show you a format and also to throw some ideas out just to kind of get the juices going. It's not, uh, by any means intended to, uh, rob you of, of the, the creativity that, that you want to bring to this, and, and ultimately, we're going to go to the public in some informal sessions. Uh, at this point, we've, we've logged, uh, two different sessions. We'll come up with the times and dates still being discussed with the school district, probably one at the middle school on the north side and one at the middle school on the south side, just to make it convenient for people. And if we have more sessions, they're probably before you here in this chamber. Uh, and, uh, then ultimately, uh, with a recommendation one way or another from you, and after we've had maybe different drafts of different chapters, we'll go to the council for, again, a, a, a working session, and then after that, work toward a more formal approval. We see all this happening over the next ninety-plus days, probably. It'll probably be late summer before we get to an action agenda at the council level. So we're not trying to rush this, even though we've been, uh, waiting for a long time. Uh, it's, it's right to do it thoughtfully. Uh, you'll note at the very beginning, if you had a chance, uh, we, we buried you with a lot of information here just last, what was it, Wednesday or Thursday? I guess it was. Uh, I've already got some acknowledgements in here. That's a, a placekeeper, although I don't think I'm wrong in saying that all of you are going to give this, uh, your careful attention and that you'll be inviting public discussion, so I thought that was a pretty safe thing to say. Uh, the first chapter is an introduction, it's a lot of this and that, but, uh, we just, at the, uh, city council level, we just did a, a new financial plan, a three-year financial plan. This information is about as fresh as we'll get. Uh, so if, if, if you want to take me to task on any of the dates and details, please do. Uh, I'm happy to try to address any questions you may have, but, uh, this is a fairly, uh, oh, economical history. Uh, the point is, for somebody who's never been in DeKalb and is just sort of interested in DeKalb, uh, we, we just want to give them a snapshot. Here's, here's who we are, here's what we have been up to this point, going back to our earliest days of incorporation. Uh, then we get to the planning and development activity that's occurred since the last plan was adopted, and I want to thank Dan especially for knocking this out, which took weeks and weeks. He went back through all the council agendas and all the plan commission agendas, and I think this is as complete as can be. And at the end, when we get to page twenty-two, and I gave you all a, a copy of where we are to date, there'll be other copies, uh, you see, uh, some planning issues. This is not, uh, meant to, uh, anticipate all the possible issues that you might articulate, but, uh, these are, uh, from at least a staff level, some very general issues which need to be addressed in this plan and any plan. And we've talked a little bit about this, and I've said somewhat jokingly, uh, if, if you would, uh, as we start working particularly on chapter four, which needs to be fleshed out, that'll be a, a major focus for this commission. You need to get out, uh, in, to the four corners of the city and look back, and with your plan, current plan in hand, uh, current land uses, and, and determine whether, uh, this is what we want DeKalb to look like, or if you're too far, or you're not far enough out in whatever direction. Our planning jurisdiction by state law is a mile and a half from any point on the corporate limit, so it's a jagged line, it's not a perfect circle. As we look, uh, just as an example, if you look to the northwest side, we have a large area which right now is, uh, for the passerby, just, uh, corn and, and soybeans, uh, more corn than, corn than soybeans, but, uh, that's the Iron Gate, uh, development area. It's, it's, uh, been annexed and zoned, but, uh, no final plats, and it'll probably be a while before we see something like that. Uh, as you look a little bit further west and a little bit further north, uh, at the intersection, say, of Annie Glidden and Bethany, um, what do you see happening from that point going north and west? So these are questions you might ask yourself. The east is sort of spoken for, isn't it? I mean, we've sort of defined, uh, some developments south of Lincoln Highway as, as being more industrial office research and so forth, as you get out to the fringe of the corporate limits. And as you look on, on the Peace Road Corridor to the east, again, uh, the zoning that we've had for, since two thousand and five has been mostly toward the industrial side. A little bit of commercial, there's a note of commercial at Pleasant and Peace, and as you go further north, I could see maybe at intersection, major, uh, signalized intersections, some more commercial nodes. But the in-betweens are going to be broad areas of land that might be more interesting to a larger industrial firm. We don't know. That's for you to sort of script. Naturally, anything that you do script, and it does fall into the plan af- after the council's approval, can be revised. But the, the point of the plan is that while you can revise the zoning, this is not zoning. This is, although it anticipates zoning in line with it, but this is the conceptual visionary part of it all. So, uh, you don't undo the plan every month or every year, and, and if there are major changes, then we have to go back through the process again and do an upgrade. When, uh, I was in another community to the north, uh, in the early two thousands, we did three plans in seven years, because that was when the, the avalanche of, uh, housing hit, and there were all kinds of concerns, other taxing bodies, uh, different points of view, and, but it made sense that we should all get together as a community and decide what we wanted to do, and we would do that, and we would feel pretty good about it, and two or three years later, oh, what are we, how, what are we going to do? So it's a good process. Uh, we're envisioning, uh, a plan of about five years' duration here. Finally, and I'll shut up and, and yield to Dan for a couple of chapters, uh, the Inventory and Analysis has some, also some pictures here, which are just plug pictures, we'll do better, but I wanted to show you that, we're hoping that this plan isn't just going to be a lot of words, that there will be some pictures that capture your imagination and what you think these words mean in a graphical way. Uh, but it's also a way for us to, to acknowledge that it's not just city government, it's other taxing bodies, it's other, uh, integral components that make up our community on a day-to-day basis. And so, uh, I have just taken you, believe it or not, to, um, page forty-two, and I'm going to yield to Dan.
Uh, thank you, Bill. Um, yeah, chapter three, uh, is the goals and objectives. Um, so I'll just go through these, uh, won't read each one, but just kind of give a little background or some of the major highlights of it. And, um, it's broken down into, um, uh, different elements. The first is community appearance, so, and each one kind of leads off with the introduction, kind of a little background of what we're talking about. And then there's a, uh, actual goal for it, and then objective, objectives are listed after that, or almost implementation strategies, or how do we get to the goal? So the first one with the, um, community appearance, uh, look at the reinvigorate a college-town identity while promoting the expansion of the tax base and community-oriented service and jobs. Something very kind of general, all-encompassing, but a few to point out, uh, looking at the TIF fund, of course, we have a TIF III, covers most of downtown and some of the corridors out from there, east and west, looking to, um, put that in place. And a project coming up this year, and Bill may be, talk a little bit about, is the, uh, reconfiguration of Route Thirty-Eight through the downtown area, looking to reduce that from four-lane down to three-lanes with a center-turn lane. That will increase the width of the sidewalks, be more pedestrian-friendly, allow restaurants to have the outdoor seating, uh, that many desire, and have enough room for the sidewalk. Um, that will also slow down the traffic, uh, because it'd be reduced, you know, visibility as you drive, so one will want to slow down. So that's the intent there. Um, that's a big project. Um, I don't know if Bill wants to add to that, or kind of the scheduling going on this year?
Yeah, the, uh, actually, we, we go out to, we open the bids on this Wednesday, sometime in the afternoon, I can't remember now, I think it's two o'clock, and the bids, uh, well, first, I'm going to be going like this when I look at the prices, uh, but, uh, if, we'll find out, uh, on, on Wednesday where we stand. Monday night, the council will have it on their agenda for action. I might al- also just say, so we're going first to fourth, and that's partly a matter of the money at hand right now, it's also a matter of the fact this is owned by the state of Illinois, this, this roadway, um, I dot. We've been a year and several months in, uh, conversation with different levels of, of the, uh, I dot staff and, and engineering staff, and, uh, we have a, we had a hard stop on the east, uh, both with budget and also with, through the plan, because of the, the railroad crossing, and at First and Lincoln for other reasons. Um, I think, and this is something I challenge you all to do too, is to think beyond today and where we might want to be in five years, and I foresee, I know we've been through different ripples of this, but I think from fourth to seventh is also another area that needs to be thought very creatively about, and I know I'm speaking to the choir here. And, and also, uh, if the identity of the town is as a college-town, and I think we're at, we're a town with a college in it still in a lot of important respects, but we're going to have to but we're going to have to physically and spatially link the downtown core, which we're trying to revive and reinvigorate, with the area of the lagoon. Now, how do you do that? We've had different ideas, and some developers have put ideas out there. It's no accident that's still in the TIF, the corridor is, in two blocks either side. I think we should think creatively about what that should be, and I'll stop. But as you put on your thinking caps, any thoughts along those lines are welcome. But I think we need a ribbon of more than just light to connect those two pieces.
And some of the more additional objectives there, looking at gateways into the city, making them distinct, you know, with uniform entryways, different roads. I won't go through all these, but these deal with everywhere from urban design guidelines, which we'll go to in a little bit, addressing natural features, working with the park district, greenways, open spaces, working with those. The second is industrial development. Of course, that's been a big growth lately, so it's recognizing all the development down in Route 23, Girl Road, Peace Road. So I think we want to, the goal is to retain that in terms of quality, continue that, and also have a diverse type of industrial development. So industrial, we're going to have that category pretty broad. That would be manufacturing, distribution, warehousing, data centers, and more of the industrial-type uses, so it's kind of broad. The current plan from '05, if you look at it, had it broken down into light industrial, heavy, and office and research. So if you look at the map, it's pretty much all, industrial is all encompassing. So obviously, some key ones here with cooperation with economic development partners, promote the development of the city southeast side, Girl Road, Peace Road, north of I-88. And jump to the map here, but, so we're stretching the industrial. This is the, it's hard without the aerial underneath, I understand, but this is Peace Road here, intersection with I-88. This is Meta and Ferrera, Amazon here, so, and the corporate limits are in black. So we're extending the industrial further out to the east to, we have a boundary agreement with Cortland, so we're continuing the industrial development to that line. We can't go any further east. So that does include a lot of acreage that is vacant, so a lot of area for future industrial development. And also, a few items on here, the TIF I, of course, that does include some industrial areas along the Union Pacific Railroad corridor, Lincoln Highway further east, where there could be redevelopment there, so we want to focus on that too. Urban Design Guidelines address some industrial development. And encourage other light industrial uses, including data centers, which we are, and other type of uses. I think diversity is a big key there, with manufacturing, the warehousing, distribution, data centers, and other industrial uses. Commercial development, of course, the retail is, you know, it's a nationwide issue with, we have some, a lot of vacancies in a few of the strip centers. So I think the objective here is to promote the community-oriented commercial retail and service outlets. How do we do that? Some focus on further developing some of these larger strip centers. I think we have to add some language probably here, allowing a variety of uses, like we've done with indoor self-storage, climate control, and retail centers. Health center, you know, residential, other type uses, why retail is suffering, or just make the ability to have some large parking areas in these retail areas. So I think we have to look at some other options or other possibilities for other uses too in these retail areas, but at the same time, promote these retail areas to make sure that they're still, when things come around again, that they're viable, they're in good condition, and people want to go there. So looking at one corridor, we got to look at South Fourth Street from Taylor to Fairview. We're discussing maybe looking at an overlay district there. In the comp plan, we got to go through that corridor a little bit more and look at, so the map is, and I'll go down to each section here in a bit, but a lot of work to be done left on that, but there's still, I think we kind of set the standard. We look really at the corridor around there. But we have to still go through almost parcel by parcel, neighborhood by neighborhood, inside the city and take a look at the land use. We used an existing land use map to start it with, and then we had to look at each parcel almost to make sure we had the correct use on there. So things have changed over time, and everything's accurate. But we're still working on that, but this is a pretty good start to it. So any other goals? Let's see, in the commercial, it's a pretty standard regarding this design, encouraging cross-alignment, centers that are developed across access, landscaping provisions. I think in there, we should add some language regarding flexibility of landscaping, so each site's different. We've been doing this a little bit with looking at a site and taking the quantity of landscaping required and applying it to the property where it makes sense the most, and allowing an administrative level to do that, and through the commission's review of it too. Always looking at the list of commercial or permitted and special uses for our commercial districts. Trying to make it easier, or, you know, if we have a special use that doesn't, is really not impactful or hurtful, maybe we move that to a permitted use to make things a little bit easier for an applicant coming in. Residential development, I think the big thing there is, again, diversity in the housing stock is key, and affordability, so. Some of the objectives, preserve neighborhoods, take a look at density. And on the land use plan, we haven't put a density down in terms of residential. We have three categories, low density, medium, and high. The current comp plan has zero to four for low dwelling units per acre, medium is four to eight, and the high is eight to 12. 12 is the max, so, and you just saw with this concept plan we reviewed, we have densities of apartments way above that. So we may, if we want the higher density or affordable, maybe we increase that ceiling on the high density to allow those with, you know, provisions of additional open space or something. We're still going through some of these, they're pretty standard. Refers to the urban design guidelines again, which we'll go over. And the next one is downtown enhancement, which we've touched on a little bit with the work on Lincoln Highway coming up. Obviously, keep the downtown, the vitality of it. Use the TIF, enhance mixed of uses. Support the TIF funded, also included in that is the AIP program, Architectural Improvement Program, looking at to maintain that, or even expanding it a little bit. Some of the language, or some of the ability to expand the funds, or what categories they can be used for. Entryways, wayfinding, additional signage to help people around and around downtown, the parking areas, and some of the events like the Egyptian Theater and other attractions. Streetscape, continuing it above or beyond Lincoln Highway to Locust and Grove Street to reduce some of the overhead wires, you know, improvements to sidewalks, parking areas, landscaping, et cetera. Again, using the TIF III funds, focusing down by Third and Locust, former McCabe's Building, and maybe areas further east of that also. Economic development, kind of an overall addressing of retail and commercial and industrial, keeping that going. Maintain the positive image for the city, working well with the DCE, DC, the Chamber. Promoting these sites along I-88 and Peace Road, and working with the other taxing districts regarding tax rates. And also, the, and then finally, we go into the community facilities, working with other taxing bodies, making sure our, the community facilities are up to standard. And natural features, that talks about open spaces and green belts, and really, and I'll go into the map here in a second, creating an ag land use, or really emphasizing that in certain areas within the mile and a half. Forcing landscape standards, good setbacks, good buffers. A lot of these, we do have the standards already in the UDO guidelines. I think we just need to look at them and refine them a little bit, so they make sense. And from my experience, I think a lot of it does with this flexibility, the ability to kind of take the standard and apply it to a site and have the flexibility to, you know, move the landscaping around, or just make the standards fit to a particular site, I think is really helpful. And we can do that through the plan development process, and I think we just need to fine-tune that. Transportation, again, a big key. Continue work with DSAT, we have a mass transit facility that we're working on, a siting process right now for that, which will serve the community for a long time. And you have the other objectives listed there. So this is a future land use map draft, this is the current 2005 map. And I think the first thing we looked at, Bill and I, you know, with, in 2005, things were going very strong in terms of development. And if you look at the area here, current boundaries, you can kind of see, but the intent was to really, for the mile and a half, was all low-density, single-family with commercial areas. And the ags areas were just little pieces at the very edge that were allowed. So very expansive, single-family, way over projected. But at that time, we were growing quite a bit, so I think the idea was bring that amount of residential, single-family in closer. That's not going to happen. Plus, we have a lot of lots that are already platted or approved zoning-wise that are vacant. That's, and there's a chart. Page 26, if you look at the bottom, page 26, lists the developments billing division, put this together where the, of the developments with lots available. Iron Gate, the big one, now that was approved on a plenary basis and zoning. It was not final-platted. But there's over 1,100 platted lots there, not platted, but approved lots. And we have some open vacant lots still in the Bridges, River Mist, the Knolls, South Point Greens, and Devonour Farms. And it breaks it down between single-family and attached. So, single-family, if you take out Iron Gate, there's 182 vacant lots, single-family. And attached single-family townhomes are 120 available lots without Iron Gate. So, and then you add Iron Gate, that's quite a bit more. So I guess the key is, we have a lot of lots already available in the city. Now, most of those are lots that are going to have higher-end homes on. You know, Bridges and some of those are higher-end, so. So what we did, we took a look at the, each area, and I'll go the northwest side and just briefly, what we're looking at. So this is the Bridges of River Mist, Bethany Road, First Street. So some of the vacant areas there, we're filling them in with multifamily, which is already proven in single-family, but this is a corporate limit line, so we're not going any further out in this particular area with any development. So this would be ag. So the mile and a half, we do have planning jurisdiction, meaning if the county proposes something, has something come into them in the unincorporated area of the mile and a half, we get the chance to object to that zoning, whatever it is. Now, they have a 40-lot acre minimum lot area for their homes, so they're not going to approve any subdivision unincorporating. They've had that policy for 20, 25-plus years, so. So in terms of areas that could be annexed into the city, so we did add a few, not till you get down, this is the, just to give orientation, the county health facility here, this is the site of, the blue is institutional, this is the first United Methodist Church site, just approved. So we do these unincorporated areas, kind of filling in with single-family. This is Eden's Gardens. We did add the area to the west, one parcel, kind of west is potential annexation. Again, you don't know if these be annexed ever, that depends on the land ownership and what the demand is, but we do have a lot of other areas. This area right here is the Iron Gate. So we just took the approved plenary plan and put it on there. With the open space, they have two kind of densities, a medium and low-density residential. They even had a school site and some parks in there. So we just took that approved plenary plan from '06 and put it, that's Iron Gate's area. But we have larger areas that are not in the city, that more infill that could be certainly developed as a single-family. We have some multifamily areas. This is the suburban apartments, not in the city, but they have some other acreage that's owned by that entity that could be some multifamily. We also, in this area, recognizing the AGN plan that was approved just a few years ago in their land use, so we have the commercial here. And the thing on the past plans, we have a lot of corridor studies. They're noted at the beginning of the comp plan, so we still recognize those. Some have been a little dated, but those are not, they don't go away. We try to incorporate their main policies there, if they're still valid, in land use, particularly AGN, the most recent one. So we try to, we're recognizing that plan still in the land use designations. Going to the southwest side, again, we're adding, let's look at the areas touching the city. So this is the Knolls, Devonour Farms. And we did add in areas for potential annexation, is low-density right next to it. Down at Fairview and Annie Glidden, we have the commercial here, which is on their current comp plan, and some residential there too. So we allowed that, but these areas out here, ag, continued as ag area. So we reduced the amount of area that we're projecting to be annexed as single, quite a bit, actually. The southeast part of the city, this is Tollway Oasis, so. Have an industrial Meta and Amazon Ferrera. And then, as I showed a little bit earlier, the continuation of the industrial out to the Cortland boundary agreement, which is shown in the diagonal coloring there. We also expanded some industrial areas over here, west of Route 23, a little bit. There are some county subdivisions that are platted. So if anything in the county that's platted subdivision, single-family, they're recognized on the plan, but little farmsteads that are part of the farm, that's, we threw that in as ag. This shows more of the downtown area and areas a little bit to the east, so. Still got some review to do here, but again, this is all built up pretty much, so we're, the land you've shown in there is just kind of reflecting the land use that's on the property. So no big really changes there. So that's just the first part of the comp plan. We'll come back with probably more, look at more detail in certain neighborhoods, and some more work to do on our end to get, you know, take a look into, almost parcel by parcel sometimes, to make sure the land use matches what's there or what we want to see, so. And then we'll get some policy directions. Some of these are going to be, what does the commission think would be good for this area? So that's it on the goals and objections. I'll let Bill finish up here with the urban design guidelines.
And just before I do, you're trying to read on a screen these maps. We'll have 11 by 17 for you, and ultimately, the comp plan, final document, will have a multi-folded thing you can pull out, so you can actually read it and study it. One other thing I want to leave you with, demographically speaking, we have a challenge which has been building into the makeup of our, of who we are, people-wise, that is posing a challenge, and you see it in your day-to-day, but you may wonder, well, how did this happen? And what we've got from, and it was confirmed in the most recent census, the 2020 decennial census and follow-on analysis, we have for about 10 to 15 years had a double-hump camel, if you look from birth to death. And people are living a little longer, so this is going, birth is still zero. But what we have, from about, say, 15 to the late 20s in terms of age, is a rise in, pretty steady from the last comp plan to today. Shows that that's still a growing part of our population, year in and year out. And then it falls pretty precipitously down into a deep trough and doesn't come up again till about the low 50s, early 50s, mid 50s. And then goes up, and goes up for a long time, because of our longer staying power, and then drops off in the mid 70s. And what does that mean? So what do you find? So what do you find between 30 and 55? You find family-raising years. You find the sauce that keeps people here, rather than seeing a lot of people going to school, matriculating here, starting, you know, working a little, and then deciding, I know where my career is, and it's somewhere else. And our community, to really be the vibrant community we want, is going to rely on all our best plans and so forth, is going to rely on starting to retain and build up that trough in the middle. And you see it in your work, and it's a, it's something we have to focus on in the government and other taxing bodies, so we're going to have to do that. Schools are important and all that, of course. We're having to come up with a mix of housing and a mix of industrial and commercial, too, that makes sense, and that we really need to invite companies to come in and incentivize them if they are creating career jobs, not just jobs, but career jobs, what can sustain. And take another look, when you get a chance, at page 27 in your book here, and look at the affordability numbers. It's real important you see that, because you know, as a business owner, that's a critical piece, too. All right, so enough of that. Going forward, urban design guidelines are, well, there was some reference to permeable pavers here earlier tonight. All that, you know, in a thousand ways adds up to how we design and build space around us. And there is a chapter, which is chapter five, that's dedicated to it. It's a first pass, it's pretty general, but it starts on page 55. I'd like you to look at that, this is where we can let it fly a little bit. And we have tried to incorporate some of these guidelines and action steps, there's more work to be done. And as you can see here and there, we've left blanks to show that we have to go back, look at our unified development order, and see ways that we can help expand the way people creatively build their environment around them. And one of those was referenced tonight, and Dan and I have been talking about this for about a year and a half or so, and that's the number of parking spaces we require. There's all kinds of things you can do also, you know, we've been, the city are our own worst enemy. We've been building streets 36 feet wide from back a curb to back a curb, and now we have problems keeping them in drivable shape, right? So we have parking on both sides, and broad 12-foot lanes. It doesn't mean that I want to see us get into the kind of narrow, say, ultra-urban environments where you're worried about scraping the car on the side, and there's no place to park and all that stuff. But between that extreme and any other, there's got to be a happy medium somewhere. We frankly can't afford to continue to build streets like that, or to pave and repave those. So all these things come into urban design, and your thoughts as we go along are going to be very welcome on this. So thank you for that. I think it's getting late, I, we could say more. There's also a chapter that's missing, and that's, ultimately, there's a chapter six, which is implementation, and that's maybe the easiest thing. When we've all just exhausted ourselves of what we want to see, then we just say, all right, here's some of the steps. We might do a couple more salvia plans. I'd like to see us do an over, we have a design study that was done in 2017 on the downtown, that looks specifically at the historic architecture, and it's sort of a lost treasure. And I think we should bring that out and talk about it some more, and then see what we'd like to see. There was a lady in the audience tonight who's a member, or was a member of the Landmark Commission, which hasn't met in four to five years, and I think it quietly went, quietly went silent, I saw it. It's late. But, how else could you go silent? So, but it was a very aggressive approach, and I think by default, or kind of a passive-aggressive way, the government has sort of backed off of enforcing some of it. So when you have that, that means, we need to look at it again. What can we do to encourage, not necessarily architecturally significant designs like we have in the downtown, but others? We want to keep, say, a craftsman house, but if we get too much detail about how we want to see that porch painted and the rest, then when a new family comes in and loves the house, and wants to get in, and wants to restore it in some way, they can't afford to do it the way we want it. So we have to have some middle ground there, and I think that was the problem with what we did. It was a good effort, it was a good idea, it just didn't play out. So we have to go back and think about that, I think. So that's all I have. Dan, you?
No.
Thank you both. Obviously, we have a lot of, a lot more reading and a lot of brainstorming to do, so. I look forward to the process.
Yeah, me too.
That is the end of our show. Any more, so any comments, suggestions? No? If not, I'll ask for a move to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by O'Flaherty, seconded by?
I second.
Seconded by Piny Graham. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and that's right when the mics go off.